Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 5th, 2016, at 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast City Hall for a regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible)
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shipley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the March 15th City Council meeting, the March 29th City Council Special Meeting, and the March 29th City Council Workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval? Who to approve?
Second.
Moving second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number two, presentation of Landscape Beautification Award to Chick-fil-A. Mr. Landon.
Good morning, Mayor City Council. This is always one of those real positive awards, and Bill Butler is going to take the lead and take us from here. I stalled as long as I know how to stall, Bill.
Good evening, Council.
He has a button he needs to push. Steve, can you help him?
Let's see. How do I get it on the screen?
You've got to put the nickel in first. There you go.
Yeah, I'm pleased to present this award tonight to one of our local businesses, Chick-fil-A. This is an award that was started by the Beautification Environmental Advisory Committee, and it recognizes properties for efforts in beautification, structural beautification of a house, and green sustainability practices. What's that? I'm sorry?
Somebody in the audience speaking.
Keep going, Bill.
Oh, okay. This site here, as you probably know, was a former Perkins Restaurant site, and they came in there and had to demolish the whole building, and under our code, you know, once you demolish more than 50%, you have to meet the current code, which was kind of a dramatic change from what was there, because they didn't have a required 35-foot landscape buffers on the Boulder Rock side and the Palm Coast Parkway side. The landscaping was, you know, pretty minimal, and as you can see from this picture here, this is the view looking on Palm Coast Parkway, looking east, and very lush landscaping there, hiding the transformer, kind of blends well with the six-laning landscaping we just did. This is a view looking along the Boulder Rock, kind of like from the fitness center there towards the intersection of Cypress Point Parkway, and you can see the nice green grass there. You'll see a before picture in a little bit where that was all parking. This is a wall detail of the buffer wall they built to help screen the property from the side and also from the adjacent residential homes across the lake, and it's a very attractive wall. On the lakeside, there's a lot of landscaping there, some ground covers to prevent erosion in the lake. They went the extra effort to make that wall look really attractive. That's the lakeside view of it. And this is some of the internal site with the drive-through wrought iron fencing. View from the Parkway median here, looking across the road there, the existing oak trees. And another view from Palm Coast Parkway. This is our six-laning improvements there on the left of the sidewalk, and on the right is the site. The trees look kind of brown because they were taken when it was winter time, so they look nice, nice and lush and green right now. And that's another view into the site from Boulder Rock. So they did a good job of keeping the existing trees. In fact, they had one tree, it was a 12-inch oak, and it was supposed to be removed, and I got a call from a contractor, and he says, "Hey, I think we can save this tree." So we went out there and made a few site adjustments, and they were able to save it. And it's good when a developer, you know, calls us wanting to save a tree, so that was good. Now I want to show you some of the before pictures if I can.
Steve?
Steve? There we go. I think I got it now. Got to open the door, right? There we go. It's not dragging over. There we go. Yeah, this is an aerial view. This is Boulder Rock Drive, this is Palm Coast Parkway, this is the old Perkins site, and this is all the asphalt. This is the area that's now a 35-foot grass landscape buffer. They also reduced some of the parking in this area, which was encroaching into the buffer, so a lot of impervious reduction of area there. This is another picture. This is from Boulder Rock looking into the site, and that's that 35-foot buffer where that car is that's now grass. I just want to say one final thing, is that this award is usually given to a site that goes over and above. You know, a lot of the things they did were required by our new code, you know, I give them that, but they did put more landscaping in in certain areas than they had to, and the fact that they took this site and redeveloped it from an abandoned site when they could have built anywhere in Palm Coast, they went the extra effort to do the demolition, the permitting, and completely redo the site, you know, so it took that corner, which was one of the more visible corners in the city, and turned it from ugly to beautiful, so... and it's always good to have a Chick-fil-A in town, too. This time I want to bring up the owner Glenn Eifert and his wife, and also Glenn Partalo, our chairman of the Beautification Environment Advisory Committee, for the plaque presentation.
with this award, and our committee is very aware of criticisms about perhaps requiring too many landscaping activities around a new building, but as Bill had to say, your efforts are noted, the building's beautiful, my swimmers love to go there to eat chicken, and there you go.
Thank you. For the next month, and advertise to the public about the award, and hang your plaque on the wall. Would you like to say anything this time?
Maybe just a few words. I'd like to thank the City of Palm Coast, it's a beautiful city, and we feel very fortunate to have been able to make it a little more beautiful. I can't tell you how many visitors we have come off of I-95, Stock five, to get something to eat and say, "Where are we? What is this city? It's beautiful." And we say Palm Coast, and we really feel like we're a part of that. I will tell you, though, the very first time I pulled up to the site after it had been developed, I did say to Bill, I said, "I didn't realize that I bought a landscaping company, I thought it was Chick-fil-A." But we do take our landscaping very seriously, would like to think that good landscaping and chicken can be a beautiful thing.
Okay. Bill, I'm looking at the left behind the door.
Oh, picture. Oh my gosh, we're going to be a lot of pictures today.
Congratulations.
We're going to do a couple, if you all can just smile for a couple minutes, I'm going to take one.
Chicken.
One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Eat more chicken. Moving on, agenda item number three, proclamation recognizing May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. Mr. Nobiel.
And I didn't bring my motorcycle. Mr. Mayor, Council, whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of efficient transportation and recreation for more than 900,000 people in Florida, and whereas it is important that the drivers of all vehicles be aware of one another and learn to share the road and practice courtesy, and whereas motorcycles provide a means of transportation that uses fewer resources, causes less wear and tear on public roadways, and increases available parking areas, and whereas it is especially important that the citizens of Florida be aware of motorcycles on the streets and highways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the American Bikers Aim Toward Education, a bait of Florida, vintage chapter representing the cities of Palm Coast, Benel, Flagler Beach, St. Augustine, and St. Augustine Beach, as well as unincorporated areas within the counties of Flagler and St. Johns, is actively promoting the safe operation, increased rider training, and increased motorist awareness of motorcycles. And whereas it is important to recognize the need for awareness on the part of all drivers, especially with regard to sharing the road with motorcycles and to honor motorcyclists' many contributions to the communities in which they live and ride. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of May 2016 be officially designated as Motorcycle Awareness Month. In the City of Palm Coast, signed this fifth day of April 2016, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor.
Come on up.
I've been elected.
You've been elected?
Yes. Thank you for this. Well, thank you for just being aware of motorcycles, we're everywhere, and you know, just look twice if you have to, and one big thing is texting, because going down a road, I see people driving with their knees, sitting there, trying to text, and just going like that, and all it takes is one quick second, and we're down. We had no hesitation. And just say, "Keep out for us," and any signs you could put on the roads, you know, saying, "Watch for motorcycles" would be helpful, so thank you.
Thank you. Follow me, come on, follow me. Put the squeeze in there. Come on up.
We'll all squeeze in somehow.
We'll make it work.
Did you win? The prices right?
No. I've never hit my picture taken so much. Keep looking for it at the post office. Agenda item number four, proclamation recognizing April as Palm Coast Elks Lodge 2709 Month, and as a 17-year member of the lodge, I'm going to do this presentation. Whereas the Palm Coast Elks Lodge Number 2709 of the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks was instituted on March 31st, 1986, and whereas the Palm Coast Elks Lodge Number 2709 are our neighbors, coworkers, educators, merchants, and professionals from all works of life, working together in the community to make the City of Palm Coast a better place to live, work, and play, and whereas Palm Coast Elks Lodge Number 2709 for the past 30 years has supported residents of City of Palm Coast in Flagler County through the following programs: on average $10,000 in scholarships to local students, feeding disabled veterans, local children's sports programs, annual drug awareness campaign, the FGVG Scholarship for young men and women pursuing careers locally in fire service and law enforcement, Boy Scout Troop 270, which has produced 17 Eagle Scouts, which by the way, far exceeds the national average, and was awarded each of these Eagle Scouts with a $1,000 scholarship; donations in excess of $25,000 to the Army of Hope to assist deployed active-duty military families; support of local firefighters with meals, hygiene items, and support during the massive forest fires; sending on average 15 local children campers free of charge to the nationally acclaimed Florida Elks Youth Camp; providing free medical treatment and therapy for local disabled children through the Florida Elks Children's Therapy Services; and nearly 30 other programs. And whereas the Palm Coast Elks Lodge 2709 observes the Elks' living creed, "Elks Care, Elks Share." Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City of Palm Coast Mayor and the City Council do hereby declare the month of April 2016 as Palm Coast Elk Lodge 2709 Month, and urge all residents of the City of Palm Coast to join City Council in congratulating the Palm Coast Elks Lodge Number 2709 on their 30th anniversary, not only during Palm Coast Elks Lodge 2709 Month, but all year long. Adopted this fifth day of April 2016, and my pleasure to sign it. Now, you can't all speak. Who would like to say a few words?
Just thank you on behalf of the Elks, as Mayor Nets put it so gracefully within the proclamation. The Elks is known within the community for giving back time and time again. It's a great organization to also join. They have a lot of social events that many of our residents get to enjoy, and I believe there's well over 1,000 members in Flagler County that are members of the Elks. So, thank you, and we look forward to celebrating our 30 years here in Palm Coast.
We're going to do a photo here. The council's going to come down. Show all the different people in their life that are Elks. There's a lot of tall faces, we may have to make a reservation. We need to do that, but I'm going to be taking the picture from this angle, so if you can't see me, okay, I'm going to say one, two, three, and then you have some other fans, a lot of paparazzi. One, two, three. One, two, three. I'm going to get one more, and then keep smiling. One, two, three. Do you want to come over? Okay. Now, that's why I'm already here. I'm sure everybody enjoys. One more guy, and then you can be one of the leaders. Thank you.
Tim, you want to come back in about an hour? He's sleeping today.
Agenda item number five, proclamation recognized in the month of April as Volunteer Month. Mr. McGuire.
Okay, Susie.
Whereas April is Florida Volunteer Month, and National Service Recognition Day is April 5th, 2016, and National Volunteer Week, April 10th through 16th, 2016, was established as the official time to recognize and celebrate the efforts of volunteers at the local, state, and national levels, and whereas volunteers can connect with local community service experiences through hundreds of community service organizations, including Flagler Volunteer Services, and whereas volunteers address the most pressing challenges facing our cities, counties, and our nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment, and helping communities recover from national disasters, and whereas volunteering enhances the lives of volunteers, increases self-esteem and physical well-being, provides opportunities to learn new skills and abilities, and offers the chance to meet new friends and associates, and whereas nonprofits, charities, community and faith-based groups, schools, national service programs, and volunteer centers such as Flagler Volunteer Services have joined the state and local governments to celebrate and praise volunteers who have given tirelessly and selflessly to the service of others, and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Palm Coast do hereby recognize the month of April as Volunteer Month in the City of Palm Coast, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of volunteer services in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Signed this fifth day of April 2016, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor.
Hi, I'm Judy Stetson Weaver, I'm the president of Flagler Volunteer Services. I'd like to introduce a couple of the other folks who are around me, Charlie Helms on the board, along with Tim O'Donnell. I think everybody knows Susie Gamblin, she certainly has been a pillar in the community for a very, very long time, and she...her right hand, Judy Missoula. And we are here today in order to talk about the different volunteers who give so generously in our community. We're very, very fortunate. Since the exception of RSVP, we've had over 4,000 volunteers, and they have dedicated over 3 million hours into our community. Those are outstanding numbers. This last year, we had 1,823 volunteers, this is City of Palm Coast, who served 178,793 hours at 52 government and nonprofit agencies in Flagler County. Based on independent sector's value of 2161, the volunteer's service value is over $3.8 million. This is enormous. So of the volunteers, 1,293 were residents of the City of Palm Coast, and they served 128,537 hours. These volunteer hours are valued at $2,777,685. So again, enormous savings to each of our communities and each of our taxpayers who are out there. Tonight, we're going to be thanking all of our volunteers for their service, and we're highlighting Palm Coast residents who've served over 1,000 hours this last year, and they are being awarded with...why don't you go ahead and show the audience? The presidential. The woman is jingling. We have 18 different volunteers, and the volunteers that we are dedicating tonight have served over 25,367 hours at 16 different locations just this last year, and their volunteer hours alone are savings of over $500,000. So please, help me welcome our different volunteers. So when you come up, please come forward, and then you're going to stay up here a minute so that we can go forward with our pictures. Sonya, Sonya Bryan.
Wardie Hallfield.
Thank you. Marcela DeSanto.
And Jerry Dickens.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Evelyn Gole.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, congratulations. Monique Lanai.
Kit Leslie.
Sarah Linder.
Paul Madizaro.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Michael Muller.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Jack Ogden.
Thank you so much.
Margaret Penburn.
Rose Marie Hacerro.
I haven't seen Tiller's stripes since I was in the Navy.
Thank you. Felix Ramos.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, congratulations. Allison Rimmer.
Thank you, congratulations.
Barbara Sharp.
Richard Stevens.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
One more, is that it?
That's it, yeah. 83 volunteers. whereas volunteers address the most pressing challenges facing our cities, counties, and our nation from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment, and helping communities recover from national disasters, and whereas volunteering enhances the lives of volunteers, increases self-esteem and physical well-being, provides opportunities to learn new skills and abilities, and offers the chance to meet new friends and associates, and whereas nonprofits, charities, community and faith-based groups, schools, national service programs, and volunteer centers such as Flagler Volunteer Services have joined the state and local governments to celebrate and praise volunteers who have given tirelessly and selflessly to the service of others, and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida do hereby recognize the month of April as Volunteer Month in the city of Palm Coast, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of volunteer services in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Signed this 5th day of April, 2016, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nettz, Mayor.
Hi, I'm Judy Stetson Weaver. I'm the president of Flagler Volunteer Services. I'd like to introduce a couple of the other folks who are around me. Charlie Helms on the board, along with Tim O'Donnell. I think everybody knows Suzie Gamblin. She certainly has been a pillar in the community for a very, very long time. And she, her right hand, Judy Missoula. And we are here today in order to talk about the different volunteers who give so generously in our community. We're very, very fortunate. Since the exception of RSVP, we've had over 4,000 volunteers, and they have dedicated over 3 million hours into our community. Those are outstanding numbers. This last year, we had 1,823 volunteers, this is City of Palm Coast, who served 178,793 hours at 52 government and nonprofit agencies in Flagler County. Based on independent sector's value of 2161, the volunteers' serve, service value is over $3.8 million. This is enormous. So of the volunteers, 1,293 were residents of the city of Palm Coast, and they served 128,537 hours. These volunteer hours are valued at $2,777,685. So again, enormous savings to each of our communities and each of our taxpayers who are out there. Tonight, we're going to be thanking all of our volunteers for their service, and we're highlighting Palm Coast residents who've served over 1,000 hours this last year. And they are being awarded with, why don't you go ahead and show the audience? The Presidential Award. The woman, the woman is jingling. We have 18 different volunteers, and the volunteers that we are dedicating tonight have served over 25,367 hours at 16 different locations just this last year. And their volunteer hours alone are savings of over $500,000. So please, help me welcome our different volunteers. So when you come up, please come forward, and then you're gonna stay up here a minute so that we can go forward with our pictures. Sonya, Sonya Bryan. Wardie Caulfield. Thank you. Marcela De Santo. And Jerry Dickens.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Evelyn Golem. Thank you, congratulations. Monique Lanai. Kit Leslie. Sarah Linder. Paul Madizaro. Michael Muller. Congratulations. Jack Ogden. Thank you so much. Margaret Penburn. Rose Marie Hacerro.
Haven't seen Toney strike since I was in the Navy.
Thank you. Felix Ramos. Thank you, congratulations. Allison Rimmer. Thank you, congratulations. Barbara Sharp. Richard Stevens.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
One more, is that it?
That's it, yeah. Eighty-three volunteers in total served over 500 hours that reached the Gold Level Presidential Service Award for 2015. They are all being recognized at various functions throughout the month of April. Congratulations to each of you, and thank you so much for your service to our community.
I'd like to thank the city of Palm Coast, because when we formed Flagler Volunteer Services, you were the first ones to step up to the plate to be a partner. Thank you. And you were brand-new, too. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanna add how much I appreciate all of our volunteers, those that do a little bit and those that do a lot. Every, every hour they spend makes a big difference in our community, and these volunteers, obviously, do a lot. So, thank you all, and thank you, thank all the volunteers, because they, they really do make a difference.
All right, we didn't have you guys still there. Maybe you're too gross, so I'll talk to them back.
I'll go back.
All right, please get back to each other. A couple, so, everybody smile. One, two, three. Sorry. One, two, three. We have single people, obviously. Keep smiling.
Now, if anybody asks the definition of a good citizen, I think you've just seen it defined in action. People who give back to their community. Thank you so much. Agenda item number six. Proclamation recognizing April 5th, 2016, as National Service Recognition Day, Mr. DiLorenzo.
I will say a little something.
Okay, great. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. Whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve, as they serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, fostering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas, national service represents a unique public-private partnership, and invests in community solutions, and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. Whereas AmeriCorps members and Senior Corps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive community, commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas, the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across the country to support the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 5th, 2016. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast do hereby proclaim April 5th, 2016, National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Signed this 5th day of April, 2016, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nettz, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're here to accept this on behalf of the National Corporation, of the Corporation for National and Community Service, which sponsors the AmeriCorps program and the Senior Corps program. The Senior Corps, the Senior Corps program is where the RSVP program, our friends from RSVP reside, as well as the Foster Grandparent Program, and the Senior Companion Program. Every year, they sponsor the Mayor's Day of National Service, and I'm happy to say that Florida has more mayors take part in this National Day of Service than any other state in the Union. So, Florida, give yourselves a hand. We would also like to announce, I, first, I'm the Executive Director for Volunteers for Community Impact out of Orlando, Florida. We have the RSVP program in Orange, Osceola, and Volusia Counties, and the Foster Grandparent Program in Orange, Osceola, Seminole, Volusia, and soon-to-be in Flagler. As of July 1st, we are bringing the Foster Grandparent Program into Flagler County. It's where we match older adults with young children from K to 3 at risk youth to help them to learn how to read with their reading skills, their math skills. It's a win-win situation. We look forward to working with our friends with RSVP to get this program up and running in Flagler County, and once again, we thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maguire. Thank you.
Thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's thinning out.
Agenda item number seven. Proclamation recognizing April 10th, 2016, through April 16th, 2016, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Vice Mayor Shipley.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, disasters that require law enforcement, fire, or medical, emergency medical services, and whereas, when an emergency transpires, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas, the safety of our emergency responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by public safety telecommunications from citizens who telephone the Flagler County Communications Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, serving as a single vital link between the public and law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel by monitoring activities via radio and providing information that ensures safety for everyone. And whereas, public safety telecommunications of Flagler County Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas, each communications employee has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism as they performed their job in the past year. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of April 10th through 16th, 2016, be designated as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, to honor the men and women whose diligence and competence keeps all of our citizens of our city and county safe. Signed this 5th day of April, 2016, City of Palm Coast, Florida, Mayor John Nettz.
Always. Good evening, Jim Anfree, Sheriff of Flagler County, Mayor Nettz, city council members, Mr. Landon. Thank you for recognizing our communication workers this week. I have with me Kelly Eisen, who is the Director of Communication. She's a person in the green shirt, not the yellow shirt, but. We're very fortunate to have Kelly join our ranks. She was a training officer in Volusia County. She comes to us with a vast wealth of experience and knowledge, and she really has helped us transform our communication divisions, one of the best in the state. As you know, we're encountering rapid growth in our community, which means more service calls, almost a 30% increase in service calls over the past three years, and that's using the same employees. There has not been an increase in employees because of budgetary constraints. Yet, we've been able to absorb that with the assistance of technology. But at the end of the day, it's that empathetic, knowledgeable person at the other end of the phone when people have personal emergencies that really mean something to our community. And the icing on all of this is that, for the first time in our history, we've been accredited in our communication division, which, as I tell people, accreditation is sort of your report card. And the Accreditation Commission, actually, the President of Accreditation Commission, went out of his way to point out how, how high our professional standards are in our communications division, and really applauded Kelly and her group. So I, I'd like the community and the city to be proud of your communication group, and how closely you work with city personnel and county personnel. It's really a great partnership. So, thank you very much.
No, I just wanted to thank everyone for acknowledging the fact that we do have an actual career. It's only been a few years since the state has even recognized it to where we actually have to get state certified. So there's a lot more recognition that's going on with this field. We are the people that are behind the scenes, but we are the true first responders with it, so we definitely appreciate it, and thank you.
Bring that baby up here.
Bring the child, too.
Not you.
Come on. You're tall with somebody, so.
I do believe there's someone in the room. Hey, doll. Bring the proclamation here, I'll tell you what. You hold the baby, I'll hold the proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Let your care put it up.
Council members, you can remain seated for the rest of the evening.
I had a cell tower proclamation.
Agenda item number eight. Resolution approving a telecommunications site lease agreement with American Tower LLC for city property located at 4 Corporate Drive. Mr. Landon.
Boy, with the publicity and comments we've received on this item, we obviously need better cell service in Palm Coast.
I didn't even know you were here.
And this is an opportunity for that, and Steve will present what the opportunity is to have a new provider, a new tower here in Palm Coast. Steve, take it from here, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Steve Iscardi, IT Department. What we've got is a proposed lease agreement with American Tower for city land at the water treatment plant one. What this will bring are the Latin lease terms. The initial term is gonna be five years, with the option to extend for five, five-year periods. Rent will be 24,000 annually, increasing 3% each year. The lease will allow American Tower to construct a 150-foot monopole tower and ground equipment structure, and this is a land lease only for the city. We will not own the tower. This has got an aerial view of Water Treatment Plant One. This is right off Palm Coast Parkway, a little bit down from the county library. What we're proposing is, or what we're thinking, is that the tower would go in this section right over here. And again, this is right off Palm Coast Parkway, right in front of the water treatment plant. And this is a picture of a type of, a monopole tower that is not allowed by code. Ray just said no. So we've got, in the code, it has to be concealed. If you notice, around town, we have a few flagpole-type towers down at the Frida Zamba Pool, at the tennis center. Those are an example of a type of concealed tower. What is being proposed is what's called a monopole, a monopine tower. Again, it's the one in the middle. So it, because of the, the type of antennas they're using, they can't use the flagpole tower, because the, it's, that's too concealed. So again, the, the towers are mounted outside the, the single pole, but then, again, they try to disguise it with the, the pine tree-looking branches. And that's basically the presentation. Any questions?
Council questions?
I do have one, only because I was doing an interview, and I had my grandson jumping on me when I was giving the information. So can you clarify where this will cover, where they'll have better coverage, what areas?
It's basically, when you think of a cellphone, or cell tower coverage, it's, it starts in the middle, and then it grabs, you know, goes out from there. So you're looking at, depending upon where it is, on the, the land by Water Plant One, it will go out from there. So you're looking at that area in Palm Coast Parkway, where it is, you know, you have coals on the, the one side. I don't know what, what they're trying to do is they're trying to fill in gaps in coverage. So I think what they're saying is it's about a two-mile diameter around the, around the actual tower. Can actually kinda show you here. So again, it would go from the, if the tower was right here, you know, it would be, you know, rings throughout here. And that, again, we've got other towers, and they have other coverage, so that will kinda mesh that whole area. So again, the, the whole area starts to have better coverage.
Other council questions? Seeing none, we'll open the main from the public. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this agenda item? Come up to the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Jack Kyle, Palm Coast. I'm looking at that picture. It looks like a pole, a regular wooden pole. Now, if it's cement, that's great, but that's, looks like a tree, and then adding on top of it. Now, how secure is that in the wind? And if this is a two-mile radius, right? That means every two miles, they're gonna put one of these things up.
Get answers to your questions. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Dan Priati, Palm Coast. My question about this is, you said, how high? 150 feet. If it goes higher, does it cover more mileage? In theory. Okay, so, there are some dead zones in this area. What about the dead zones that are cut, that are in the Rs and the Ps? Do you want to reply now? That's my question.
Well, let's forget all the questions first. Next speaker.
Lewis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I think this is a good idea.
I think this is a good idea if it covers the P section. Because we getting flat, flat stuff, and it's getting worse. And today was the worst. Talk to you later.
Next speaker.
Evening, George Mail, Palm Coast. With this, are there any negotiations further down the road concerning additional towers even south of Bel Air and around Bel Air Boulevard? Yeah, thank you.
Got an answer to that one. Next speaker. Seeing none, approach the podium. We close the public portion of the meeting. Back to council, but first. Yeah, it looks like a wooden pole, but what is it and what is its hurricane rating?
It's definitely not wooden. It's a metal structure. And again, we're sure that it can handle all hurricane, you know, it's designed for that as a monopole. As you can see, it doesn't have any guy wires. And again, it's basically the same as the flagpoles we already have in the community. So it, like I said, it shouldn't have. I don't know specifically what the hurricane wind rating is, but I'm assured, and I believe it's in the lease, that it has to be able to withstand that.
This is 150 foot. The question is raised is, if you had a taller one, would you get further coverage? And why isn't, is American Tower LLC, why aren't they considering a taller tower?
Some of it is a balance. You know, if you go with a taller structure, then you do start getting into aesthetics. I don't know what the actual height limit is before they have to start putting guy wires and making it more of a mesh-type structure rather than just the monopole. So you have aesthetic issues. And as far as cell towers go, again, it's not always, the higher you go, there is a point of diminishing returns. So whereas 150 is good, they can fit four carriers on this tower. It's more a matter of having the coverage, you know, more mesh around, you know, different towers, different sites, that, you know, would give us better coverage.
If you have a two-mile radius, that probably is not going to serve the P section.
Probably not.
My understanding is that if you are a cellphone carrier, Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, whoever else they may be, your job is to serve your customers if you want to keep them as customers. And there should be a private sector motivation for these carriers to provide service. Otherwise, if the residents realize that Carrier A is not giving the adequate coverage, but Carrier B, for a similar cost, does, they're going to lose customers. So there's a certain motivation in part of the private sector to provide the service that we all seem to need. And then the question, American Tower, they build the tower, and then they lease it out. Have there been any negotiations, discussions about additional towers? County, other parts of the city?
Right, not specifically with American Tower, but we have kind of an ongoing process, you know, to bring on a group that will start marketing our area, start looking at, you know, the city as a whole as far as, okay, where are, you know, holes in coverage? And to look at it, again, as one whole unit, and then start marketing to the different carriers and the tower companies.
Mayor, I'd like to add to that, that we actually are in the, we've gone through a selection process and in the stages of trying to negotiate a contract with a company that does exactly what Steve just described, with the idea that we already have towers that have additional capability for additional antennas. In the P section, for example, we have a tower at Bel Air Park, which is right behind Buddy Taylor Middle School. We also have one at the tennis center. So, but they both only have a couple of providers at most. And so there's actually additional capability out there with existing towers. But it does take, you know, instead of complaining to the city, complain to that provider and say, hey, you know, we need better service.
And this one here we're talking about right now, it's only AT&amp;T, is what we're going to end up with right now.
Right now, the American Tower tells us it has AT&amp;T on the hook to put the antennas up. But it also has space for three additional, so it can be three additional providers. The company we're working with actually will market our existing towers. And then they do analysis as to where those gaps are, and if there's other good locations that will fill those gaps. Another key factor in this is more and more data tries to get pushed through the airwaves and through this system, or systems. It reduces the capacity, and it actually, that's where some people say, boy, it's bad today. Well, that means there's more people talking, pushing data. Maybe at 3:00 in the morning, it'd be a lot easier. But, you know, who wants to use it at that time? So it's not just, you know, taking existing, you actually have to add because we're getting more and more customers and more and more mobile data trying to go through these. And we're trying to help make that happen because, as you can see from response, people are looking for better service.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one thing, because I've been approached a couple times. I'm like, really? I mean, it's, again, it seems to be an issue affecting a lot of people. But one thing that people may not be aware of is a new, recently new, I know, new to AT&amp;T, is a capability called Wi-Fi calling. And if you don't take advantage of that, you're kind of missing out in your home. If you have, like I said, AT&amp;T just added it about four months ago. But you can, it's an option you can turn on on your phone. But what it'll do is, if it doesn't have a cellular signal, it will use the Wi-Fi in your house to go out and make calls. So again, if you have very bad coverage in your house, but you have, most people have Wi-Fi within their homes, you can turn that on, your phone will take advantage of that. And again, kind of mask the fact that you have lousy cell coverage.
But it's more than AT&amp;T, I think.
Right, yeah, T-Mobile has it. Again, a lot of the carriers, if not all of them, have it these days. So if you're not using that, definitely check with your carrier and see if you can take advantage of it.
Mr. Priati, we did close public comment, but we'll give you another bite out of the apple. Yes, sir.
I'm all in favor of this happening because of the coverage we need in that area. But is there a way we can allow this if they get contracts from other carriers first before it goes up? One carrier right now.
I'm not sure I understand the question. Well, he's saying maybe lock in four carriers before we put the pole up. Is that what you're saying? Like, three or four? But it's got to start somewhere. I guess most of them, it's customer-based. So what's going to happen is, right now, AT&amp;T's probably on there because there's a lot of AT&amp;T customers in that area. Whereas Sprint might only have a few, so they're not willing to make the investment just yet. So like the mayor was saying, this is really private sector-driven. This is driven by cellphone customers. And the best thing you can do, all of us in Palm Coast, is get on our email and write to our carrier and say, hey, I have no service here. What are you doing for me? I'm going to have to move. AT&amp;T, just put up a cell tower. You know, that's how we have to push them. Because we can't, we have no, you know, we can enable them by giving them the area, the property, you know, and making adjustments if needed, if we feel necessary in code. But we can't get the carriers, and we can't get the tower companies. Lorenzo?
I think the only thing I'd add to that is that they don't all have the same coverage gaps as well.
Right.
Right? Some of the carriers may be on the one in Indian Trail, so they won't need to be on this one.
On that one, that's right, yep.
But depending on which towers they're using, then they're looking for the one in between.
Yeah. But I don't think the R or the P section has anyone working well in that area. Additional council comments or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Now, I've got an easy one for you. Agenda item number nine. Appoint two members to fill two vacancies on the Leisure Service Advisory Committee, and there were two applicants. Okay. I don't think we need a ballot on this one.
Can we have it just for fun?
No. Is there a motion to approve the two applicants?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the consent agenda items 10 through 15.
Will there be public comment?
That's a city council function. But that's not a debatable item, discussable item. Consent agenda items 10 through 15. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any of these items individually before city council takes an action on them collectively. So would anyone from the public like to speak on agenda items 10 through 15?
11.
Number 11. Anyone else? Seeing no other responses? Council members, is there a motion to approve? You got one more.
10.
10?
Is there a place I can read where there's more details about what it is?
We'll give you details of due presentation. Is there a motion to approve agenda items 12 through 15? No, moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number 10. Mr. Landon.
Well, Mayor, City Council, we presented this at the workshop. This is our efforts to reduce, and all of the fee adjustments are to reduce the fees for primarily not new construction, but the repairs, the replacement, you know, re-roofing, an AC unit, new hot water heater. And we've worked hard on trying to make those more attractive for people to get those permits and hopefully do those kind of home repair and improvements. And we've also tried to make them more fair. When you do one inspection for a hot water heater instead of having electrical and plumbing, also, we just do one inspection and charge for one inspection with qualified individuals. So that's really what this is all about. If we, anybody have any questions? We're prepared to give details.
I do, Mr. Priati, I do have a printout of the changes, so if you'd like to have that, I'd be happy to give it to you. Any other discussion on agenda item number 10? Come back to city council, questions, comments, or a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number 11. Resolution authorizing low-level flights in connection with operations of the East Flagler County Mosquito Control District. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is an annual process. You know, the East Flagler County Mosquito Control District is the one that does control mosquitoes. I personally think they do a great job. It requires a resolution from city council on this item each year to authorize them to do a flyover if necessary. This is primarily out in the rural areas, the swamp areas, the unpopulated areas to try to control the mosquitoes out there. In the urban area, they are, do their foggers around our streets, and you'll see them at night. But once again, it's a standard process that's required to help keep down the mosquitoes.
Anyone from the public wish to be heard on agenda item number 11?
I know what the situation, my name is Jack Carroll. But I want to know if, I've been here 21 years, and I'd get to see somebody come down my street and do some mosquito work. So what I would like to know is, why am I paying? Although it's a minimal amount, but why am I paying for a service I'm not getting?
Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. Just give us the time in which these flyovers come. This way, I will be in my bed. Thank you.
Next speaker. Speaker, seeing no one approach the podium. I close the public portion of the meeting. Come back to council. The question about the service you're getting or not getting is better directed at the East Flagler County Mosquito Commission. That is an elected board. But I would venture to say that if you're not seeing a whole lot of mosquitoes around, you are getting the service. As Mr. Landon alluded to, in the residential areas, they typically use a truck or Jeep-mounted fogger. And they're typically running 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM. Most of us are sound asleep in our little beds or not even aware that the service is being provided. But I can tell you, as a former resident of New Jersey, where the mosquito is the state bird, we do not have a lot of mosquito problems here in East Flagler County. City council, additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. Come up to the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes, please.
No fighting. Thank you. I hope this is the right agenda to talk about speed bumps. If I might approach the council? Whoop, right here. I brought some masks just to... I'll be real quick. I live on Woodbury Drive, up over in Pine Lakes, which we in the area call it the Daytona Speedway of Palm Coast. The speed limit on that road is 20 and 30 miles an hour. People continuously do 45 to 60 miles an hour all day and all night. It's a cut-through, and you can see it on the map, between Pine Lakes, Parkway, the R section, and Route 1. On any given day, there's 200 to 300 automobiles that go down this residential area. And they fly. They absolutely fly. They can't ask the sheriff's department to be there 24/7. It just doesn't work out. People cannot walk on that street. There are no sidewalks. It's just too dangerous. It's gotten too dangerous to go get your mail. I almost got hit. A neighbor almost got hit. And the biggest thing there is two bus stops. And one of the things I wanted to bring up, and by the way, the little red box, I'm not a traffic engineer, but that's where I put the little speed bumps. Three things happened in the last couple of months out there. One was an F, a Florida power gentleman taking a sign out of his truck, almost got hit. Just missed him, going 55 miles an hour. I almost got my head taken off at my mailbox. And the worst, what, two trash cans were hit, mailbox was hit. Now, this is just my little zone that I can see, just in front of me. A young man walked into the bus stop. I thought the lady was going to hit him. I almost had a heart attack. That poor kid jumped in the swell and just put his hands on his hips because she missed him by no more than three inches. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. And if you look on the map, Whiteview has nothing, just businesses. If you go to Speed Level 4550 down Whiteview, go the same way, you actually save about four seconds, about twice. But when they come to our area, they fly so fast, they cut the corner, they take all the swell out when they do it. But they just, it's nothing to see cars going 60, 60, all day. Can't back out of your driveway. People can't walk on the street. So we're trying to get it back. I have been involved, where you folks are, as a selectman. And speed bumps have always worked for us in New Hampshire, Vermont, Maryland, in the right areas. So I'm asking the council, please consider this before somebody gets killed. It is bad. It is getting really, really bad. And I think that's it. If there's anything I can do to help, you want the whole area to sign a petition. I can get that done. I don't know where to take it from here.
Thank you. Next speaker.
We're good? Thank you.
Commander Carmen, before you leave tonight, I'm going to give you a copy of this map. Perhaps you can have our patrol take a closer look at it. Next speaker.
Courtney McDonald, Palm Coast. As there are currently five people running for the city's mayor seat and four people running for the two council seats. My question for the current council is, does either the sheriff office[1780.96] My question for the current council is, does either the sheriff office or the state run background checks and fingerprint the future people that may be running our city? If not, why? Please don't allow people who may be criminals run and represent our city. Thank you.
Got to get an answer for that one. Next speaker.
Gentlemen, ladies, Dan Priati, Palm Coast, my question, my question concern is, I recently got a warning or a notice with garbage cans being in front of my house. I understand laws and regulations ordinances are created for the safety and welfare of the general public. The welfare I'm concerned with is, when I have these garbage cans inside my garage, I've got bugs that carry bad bacteria coming in, and me being in the same disability that I have, I have to live in a very clean environment. I've, I've thought about putting, you know, a fence up in front and hiding behind, that is also going to hinder my ability to get around there, get on the grass, and come around. And I'm wondering if we, what paperwork or whatnot, which I also sent a letter to, an email, that I've yet to be responded upon this letter, and I'm wondering what I can do, if there's any paperwork that I can file that will cover me with the Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety-two, to have an exemption to this rule.
Try to get an answer for you.
Thank you.
To whom did you send that letter?
Barbara Rosser.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Robin McDonald, Palm Coast, at the last mayor and council meeting, I raised some questions, and I'd like to congratulate Councilman Di Lorenzo because he did answer all of my questions. The only one question that wasn't answered was, is there a possibility that the city could investigate the idea of having a citizens committee of residents from all walks of life to sit down with the public officials to talk about a raise for any of the city heads of the department? Now also, since we're talking about money, I'd like to, city fathers who obviously have the most utmost respect for all of the department heads that are sitting over here, but a lot of people who may live in Palm Coast may not know what these ladies and gentlemen do. And so for the public record, I'd like to publicly acknowledge and thank the following people. Mr. Quinn, our finance manager, who is responsible for making sure all the bills get paid every month. Mr. Adams from the utility department, he's responsible for making sure that the lights go on and off when they're supposed to in Palm Coast. Mr. Ebiru from the Department of Public Works, who is definitely responsible for making sure that the streets are clean and the swells are always working the way they are. Commander Carmen from the sheriff's department, who's always making sure that the homes and schools are safe, someone who's close to my heart, obviously. Chief Beatty from the fire department, who always makes sure that the fire department is always there when we need them, and by the way, if anybody in the city of Palm Coast needs to have smoke detector batteries changed, just call the fire department and they'll come and do it for free. All they ask is that you give them the batteries, because I know for a fact they're going to do it, because they're coming to my house on Sunday. So as you can see, we have some of the best of the best. This is a good team, and they deserve to be paid for being the best. So when their individual contracts come up, it's going to be okay to reach a little bit deeper into their pockets and give them what they want, because I wouldn't want to lose any of them.
Thank you, sir. I'm sure they appreciate the kind words. Next speaker.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast, I got a piece from the paper, says wind mitigation grants are available for some Flagler County residents. And it gives for now, Flagler Beach and unincorporated areas. What happened to Palm Coast? Are we all so rich in Palm Coast that we don't need a little bit of a grant to help us out? Is Palm Coast, what is it with Palm Coast that we don't, are we separate from Flagler County? Don't we get any of the things, any of the grants, or is it that you're just not doing it? There are a lot of people that could use a little help, and I don't see why, it should just be for certain individuals in certain cities. So you're the bosses, do something.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public portion of meeting, come back to council, but first, the issue of speed bumps, this is something city council has talked about over the years. We have found them to be more dangerous than they are beneficial, but it's something that city council can discuss at any time they like. Virginia, background checks, do we do background checks, fingerprint checks on candidates?
No, we do not.
I think I got here. You pay your money and you take your chances. I don't know this for a fact, but I would suspect that the media in Flagler County, print, television, I would, I would almost bet that they do, and if they found something, I'd be almost positive that they would raise it. I mean, if you look at the, the number of ethics violations that have been alleged about our county commission, I'm sure the same thing, same kind of thing would happen, same kind of publicity would occur if Newton Media found that there was somebody with a significant glitch in their record. The question about garbage cans and an ADA exemption, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Landon and to our building department, to our code enforcement department, to see what there may or may not be.
There is a process that we can take a look at it for accommodations. There's different things that possibly we could, we could do. Emails I saw, I think we got that request this afternoon, so we will get back to Mr. Priati on his request.
The next question had to do with the creation of a citizens committee to help evaluate staff for potential raises. Something, something we could do, but I can tell you from a number of years' experience in local governments, twelve years in New Jersey and fifteen years in Palm Coast, it is difficult for elected officials to understand the full scope, breadth, and depth of a employee's work record. For a person who is not privy to that, it would be almost impossible, and it's not something that I'm prepared to consider. Wind mitigation suits, Mr. Landon, I said this, saw the same article.
This is a great chance to actually maybe get some word out there that not only do we have the same dollars, because we're large enough, it comes directly to Palm Coast, but we also have additional housing assistance for people that want to make repairs and improvements to their home that qualify under the Community Development Block Grant. And we have combined both of those grant programs that we've received dollars to provide that assistance here in Palm Coast. But once again, because we are what they would call an entitlement community, a community over fifty thousand, that money comes directly to the city and not through the county or the state. So in this case, the county has, I guess, received some for the smaller communities and unincorporated area. It was a few months ago, city council approved the resolution to allow this and the idea of actually leveraging the dollars so that in addition to wind mitigation, we can also maybe replace them, make some, allow the resident to make some improvements with these grant dollars above and beyond what a wind mitigation grant would allow. So it's a, it's a good way of combining those dollars. So this has given opportunity that if people in Palm Coast want to apply, it's a matter of contacting our business assistance and our economic development, no, excuse me, that's change, community development, IDA is now in charge of that through our planning office. They can call there and, and see if they would qualify for the grant.
Just a comment, Mr. Landon used the term entitlement grants, and that is correct. When you reach a certain size, certain population level, you have two options as a community. You can opt to take the so-called entitlement grants, which are guaranteed money, you get it, you get it every year, you don't have to beg, you don't, it's not a competitive grant, it's yours for the asking. The alternative was to stay in the competitive grant pool. The amount of dollars that would be available in any given year would be higher, but there was always a significant chance that you might get nothing because it is a competitive grant. So because of the fact that the city gets these so-called entitlement grants, you don't hear a lot about advertising competitive grants, it's kind of a routine now that we've been doing this for several years, but the point is well taken. If, it is income relative, so this is low and moderate income, but there are dollars, grant dollars available for wind mitigation and for other home improvements, home maintenance factors, roofs, things of that nature.
Did I say something?
We're giving everybody two bites out of the apple today, sure, Jack.
You, Jack Carroll, you mentioned monies. According to the article here, it says preference is given to low and moderate income households as defined by HUD guidelines, but there is no income limit to release states.
So, I'm sorry, there's no income limit for?
There is, it says, but there is no income limit to release states. So whatever they're putting out to the public, it says that there is no limit to how much you can make, unless that's, you know, it's, that's one thing is outdoing the other, but that's what it says. So I just wanted to say that, you know, you said there's a limit, and this says no limit. So maybe Palm Coast is different.
Palm Coast is not different, but the CDB grants, CDBG grants are absolutely low and moderate income grants. I hesitate to say this for fear of offending somebody, but just because you read it in the paper doesn't necessarily mean it's true. All right. Discussion by city council matters not on the agenda. Mr. McGuire, why don't we start with you? Pass. Nobile.
I have a few things, Mr. Mayor. First question, Mr. Landon, in regards to waste management, and our, I guess, the garden clippings pickup, okay, what is that, what is in that entailed? Is it a certain day, a certain amount?
Yes.
Okay. So, and here's, I got, I got a call, and a woman said she has some clippings, I didn't, we've been playing phone tag, I just got her message, and they want to charge her extra for pickup. Is that normal?
Yes, if, if it goes over, there's two, two things that are sometimes misunderstood. One of them is, is that, yes, we have the yard debris pickup every Wednesday throughout the whole community.
Right.
There is a size limit, I, you know, it's...
How do they, how's that determined?
By our contract.
Okay. So let me ask this, let me ask this follow, because I got you, I don't want to go into how big it is.
There's one other key factor, and that is that if it is contracted out by a landscaper...
That's different.
They are required, and sometimes they are caught putting it out there, but they're required to haul it away. This is for service for residents, not for contractors.
Contractors to do it and leave it.
Right. So even if it's small enough that we normally would pick up...
So let's assume I go out and I do my yearly yard work, okay, and it exceeds, so what if I put out half this week and half next week?
Absolutely.
But what's the point of that?
The volume of the truck.
Okay, that, so that just, so let me ask this question then, why don't they just pick up what they should and leave the rest and not, and see, what are they going to do for extra money, send another truck?
They actually, it depends on how much it is. Sometimes it's volume of the truck, but also it's the actual physical, in other words, you, you, people will cut down a tree and put the whole tree out.
No, she said it was, it was palm tree stuff.
Yeah, I'm trying to, yeah.
That's what I said, was if it's a tree and you chopped it into logs...
And so they, they actually have to bring out a grab hook to put it in.
But what are they going to do in the amount of excess? And I pay the seventy-five dollars, they're going to take it, or are they going to make a special trip out?
They will bring in, when they do that, they bring in a separate truck, a special trip to just...
So my advice to her is going to be, put some away and save it for next week.
What I do, I have the benefit of a vacant lot next door, so I can put it close to the property line and put out half, and then the next week, put out the other half. Maybe it's not so easy if you don't have that...
That's good, I thought you were going to say you throw it in there a lot.
I'm saying I've got a nice little place that I can store it for a week.
Okay.
The reason why, that's important, because if you store it out on the street, you're very likely you're going to get tagged by code enforcement because we don't let you store it out there all week. So you've got to find some place on your property that...
It's out of the way.
It's out of the way and not going to get people's attention.
Out of sight and out of mind.
And then you can bring it out enough, or within that limit of what it's happening.
So I, I'm hoping to catch up with her on the phone, but I just wanted to have a, okay, next question is, oh yeah, sure.
I just wanted to mention also that the maximum length is four feet, so she...
Per item, per thing?
Well, no, per like bundle, or, so like if you, I have a queen palm out front, and it's like eight foot or longer, right, so break it, break it in half, cut it in half, get it close to four foot, so they pick it up.
If I could add to that, there's a misperception, you're supposed to bundle it.
Right, no, right.
You do not have to bundle it, you just...
Yeah, it's just out there, right, and that's the way, we bag it.
Don't need to tie string around it or anything like that.
Okay. Next question, I walk out of my house every day now, and somebody grabs me and says, when are they going to mow these lots? When is that starting up?
I can tell you they're, they've already started.
Started, okay, so it's just a matter of time before you get to, to my surroundings, so I should tell them, leave me alone.
Yes, we, we recently started, so it's just a matter of time before, you know, we run through the community.
Okay. Okay, but it has started, so it's, it's just a matter of time before they go, oh, that's super. Okay, now unhappy stuff. I am embarrassed and tired of people grabbing me on the side of the road and saying, hey, did you read what the county said this week in the newspaper? And I go, no, so I have to go home and read that we have a proxy war going on, and on this EMS thing with the ambulance. And there was an article, I went home and read, where they said, well, they might have thought of meeting with us, but now they're not, and there's no reason to, or they want to save it now till after the elections, because this is like appointing a Supreme Justice, you know, Supreme Court Justice, so we've got to wait till the next election. It's getting, it's getting, this, this issue is getting irritating. I don't understand why they won't talk to us, but they will talk to the newspaper, okay? I just don't understand that. Now, I, I'm, this is what I'm tired of, this is what we talked about at, at the last time we spoke, this is that I, it's hard for me to talk to our people and then their people and get the same answers. They, oh no, they didn't tell you this, and then I go back and, oh no, they didn't tell you that, and I'm like, okay, I'm, I'm not playing this, you know, this ball back and forth. So we really, I don't know what to do here, but, you know, it's got to be nailed down somehow. And the other thing is, I'm not, you know, on our side too, I'm a little, a little disappointed. This for me, not, not, just this, this is my statement, I, this started for me as a way to save some dollars, okay? You know, we're sending out big red trucks, maybe we don't do that, we do something else, great, okay? So to me, it turned out to be a cost saving. Now, we talked about you're going to get some data on what we thought that savings was going to be, so that'll come eventually, right? But I don't, when I heard the concept of maybe buying two ambulances, I almost fell off my chair, and I was just like, wait a minute, I want to save money. I don't want to put the cost of a... I don't want to put the cost of another engine, almost another engine into ambulances to do this. So I'm, I'm afraid this is getting beyond the scope. I don't think we all are, I don't think we are all on the same page of what we want to accomplish. Not saying there's a wrong one and a right one, I'm just saying I don't think we're on the same page. And I think we need to get on that page so we can answer the question directly to the county, this is the problem we're trying to solve. So if we could put that on, get that on an agenda somewhere, if we can hash this out or, it doesn't even have to be on agenda, we can look it through an email to each, from you to each, this is what we're trying to accomplish. Because like I said, I'm trying to, my accomplish, my goal was to save some dollars, not to spend more dollars, not to take on more, but to, to save dollars. We're going on ambulance calls, I'm sorry, medical calls. And I, this is how I feel. I feel our residents are being taxed for our city fire department and for the county responding. And we're getting taxed twice to respond to the same, and, and now I'm saying, now, I don't, I'm not saying we shouldn't be doing it because I, I like the idea that we're efficient and, and great care is coming to the residents. But all I'm looking at is how do we reduce that cost to respond to the medical calls because they're in the high 90 percentile of the calls we're going on. I don't know, I just got mad and I saw, I read it like 15 minutes before the, before I left to come here. And I was like, ay, 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 ay.
Mr. Nobiel, I'd like to comment on that.
Please.
I recently was told that one of the county commissioners has said that that commissioner doesn't understand what the problem is that we're trying to solve.
Right.
That was the reason that this council asked me, directed me to write a letter requesting a joint meeting so that we could explain the issue.
Exactly.
Let me, for the benefit of the public, give you my two cents word. There are two issues. When there is an EMS dispatch, they automatically dispatch Palm Coast Fire Department personnel. Why? There are two reasons. And I have 35 years in experience as an EMS provider, so I think I know what I'm talking about. One, response time. There are no ambulances in the north stationed permanently in the northern portion of our community, but we do have firehouses there. In many cases, especially if the two or the three ambulances that are in Palm Coast, if they're busy, the county will relocate an ambulance from some other location, the Barrier Island, the Mondex, but that takes time. But we have personnel there. So one reason for dispatching our personnel is to improve response time. The other reason has to do with manpower. There are some EMS calls that simply require more than two people. One of the proposals that was outlined in great detail to city council by Deputy Chief Forte and also outlined to the county staff was this so-called two plus two concept. The county owns 11 ambulances. There are seven in full-time service. There are four that are in reserve. From what I've been told, and I'd like to meet with the county so they can give me the correct information, but I've been told that one of those four reserve ambulances is in pretty good shape. You could, it's used routinely anyway. The other three are toward the end of their lifespan. They're, they're tired, they're a little bit rundown. But the proposal was to take two of those reserve ambulances and put them in the northeast and the northwest portion of our community. That will automatically improve response time. Now, the county currently has four employees stationed in Palm Coast. I'm not counting the airport, the two that are in Palm Coast, they have four employees. Put one employee on each of the four ambulances, no additional cost to the county. Those ambulances are going to be housed in our fire station. Instead of sending our men out, our men and women out on the big red fire truck, they climb in the back of the ambulance. There's your cost savings. But it's, it's cost savings plus response time. Now, I'm going to tell you a little story since we've got time to spare. Many years ago, I was a fire commissioner in a community in New Jersey where I was also vice mayor. And I had a gentleman come up to me one day with a chip on his shoulder and he said, let me ask you a question. What was your fire budget last year? Now, it was an all volunteer fire department, so the budget was about $500,000, and I told him that. And he said, and what was your fire loss last year? And I said, well, it was about $30,000. You see how stupid you are? You should disband your fire department, self-insure, and you can save the taxpayers $470,000. I looked at him in great disbelief. And I said, well, one of the reasons the fire loss is so low is because we get there and put out the fires quickly. In the fire service, it's axiomatic that a fire doubles in volume every three minutes. What starts out as a wastebasket fire, pretty soon engulfs the whole house if you don't put it out. So quick response time. But I said, well, I ought to say, but sir, what's the first thing you see firefighters do at a scene of a structure fire? They go in for search and rescue. If that's your wife, if it's that your infant child, if it's your disabled grandmother or grandfather's in that house, I don't know how much money I'd have to put aside to compensate you. So it's the issue of response time. That's true. Now, there are some EMS calls that don't necessarily require super fast response. You broke your ankle, it's broken now, it's going to be broken 15 minutes from now. But there are medical calls that are very, very time sensitive. Strokes, cerebral embolism, embolisms, an apelactic shock. There are some things where response time equals life-saving. We've been criticized by some people saying, well, we have a very rich level of service in Palm Coast. If it's your wife, if it's your child, if it's your parent who's in need of that quick response, there's nothing too rich about it. Now, I've tried to explain in a few moments, one approach to what might resolve the dual issue of better response time and more efficient use of manpower. Maybe the county's listening tonight. Maybe that commissioner who commented about not knowing what the problem is, maybe this will help. But I will say it again, I would much rather, and if you said, I'd rather sit down with our staff and say, here's the issue that we're trying to resolve. Is that two plus two approach the only approach? No, there are other things you could do, but unless we have an opportunity to talk about them, to discuss them.
That's where, and that's where I was going. And I'm on board with the, with this two plus two, you know, when I.
Or some other variation.
Or some other variation. What I, what, what I'm losing myself with is, this is what the county is supposed to be providing. I don't want to pay $300,000 for two new ambulances when the county needs to provide this service. Now, like you said, and I agree with you 100%, we, we're lacking up in that, not in fire response or in our response, but in the ambulance response up in that north ass area. And the county should be responding. We just gave them a way to increase that response without expending more dollars than they need to based on our size. And we, see, that's where I want to push this on them. I don't want us to sit back and say easily that, oh, yeah, we'll buy these or we'll, I want to, because like, because I feel like we're paying for this service in a little bit too much overlap. And there's going to be overlap. And I'm okay with that because like I said, our service is going to be better for that. And you can't put a price on that. You can't say it's worth this or let's cut that. But I want the, the county to be responsible for what they won't give us to do. See, if they won't allow us to do it, then they are going to have to step up.
I was talking to someone today from the media and he said, one of the county, one of the commissioners was quoted as saying, well, if Palm Coast has got a problem, Palm Coast should fix it. And I asked this person from the media, well, whose EMS system is it? He said, well, it's the county's. And I said, so how would you propose that Palm Coast fixes the county's system? You're absolutely right, Mr. Nobiel.
Thank you. I'm good.
It's, but I'm not trying to push something down their throat. I'm not trying to make demands. I'm saying, let's sit down and talk about it.
And figure it out.
Now, if, if, if they feel that, that they would rather wait until after November, sure, you can put this off and put this off and put this off. Meanwhile.
I'm going to have to deal with Mr. DiLorenzo and I don't know if I want to do that. I want him on this side of the table for now. Anyway.
If I can add to something, in my recent conversation with the commissioner, he said, please, you should come meet with the, Mr. Coffey and Mr. Petito and so you can, you know, get a fuller picture. But I, what I feel will happen is the scenario that you discussed at the start is that, okay, I, I won't have a full picture, I'll have two pictures.
Their picture, yeah.
Right.
And that's where I want, see, and that's the point is, yes, they have their ideas, we have our ideas, but they need to be spoken about crossfire right away.
Right.
So we can either put something to rest or raise it up and say, yeah, that is an issue.
I got a comment, Your Honor.
I don't think, Jason, I interrupted him.
I had a meeting with Mr. Coffey and Mr. Petito and their suggestion was consolidate the fire departments. That's all they had to offer and they really didn't want to talk about it or anything else.
Yeah. And, and, let's just talk about that consolidation for just a second. I'm sorry, Jason, this is your opportunity, but we have a certain number of fire trucks. We have a certain number of, of personnel. We're providing what I think is, is a desirable level of service. I go back to my issue of it's that you put out the fire quickly, you get there quickly. But our fire department does more than put out fires. They spend a good deal of time on fire prevention. They do, they're go out running classes for the schools, they take their portable burn house and they run programs down at the park, they do inspections, they change batteries, they, they do inspect, they do voluntary inspections in homes, they do the required inspections of our resident, of our commu, of our retail and commercial and our industrial. They're working very hard on, on fire prevention, which is of course much better than putting fires out if you can prevent them. But let's suppose we consolidated. Well, yes, Palm Coast could cut $4 billion out of its budget.
No, our, our budget is $7 million, theirs is $8 million.
All right, $7 million. We could cut $7 million out of our budget.
No, no, that's our budget. Oh, no, that's, okay.
We're, we're giving the fire department over to the county so we can take $7 million out of our budget. Guess what? The county's got to put $7 million in their budget. Oh, now, there might be a little savings, yes. We could get, instead of two fire chiefs, we could have one, but I bet you there'd be another deputy chief or a battalion chief or assistant. There might be a few penny savings. But what concerns me about this consolidation issue, and I'm absolutely diametrically opposed to it, is the county, certain individuals in the county continue to say, well, our service is too rich. So how are they going to save money closing down, diminishing the level of service? And I'm not willing to do that in an urban community like Palm Coast, so, anyway. There's a long, long history of why we created our own fire department. There's a long, long history of why we incorporated as a city and that. I'm sorry, Mr. DiLorenzo, it was your, I believe it was.
I'm not.
You were responding to me.
You're not sorry.
Go ahead, Jason, I'm sorry.
Mr. Landon, do you have an update on the construction of the bus stop pilot program? Have we started construction on any of them?
Yes, I believe that's going on. I know design was finished and I believe they're under construction this week.
All three at the same time? First one?
Where's the first one going to be?
I forget the locations.
Palm Coast.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know which one, the three were selected, I don't know which one had first construction.
The goal is to get them all finished hopefully this week, early next week, so that we'll have the rest of this school year to evaluate, to see if the students use them, see if it actually works. And, and if it does, then we can talk about what we're going to do in the future. If it seems to be, kids are still standing in the street, not on the concrete, well, there's no reason to.
Continue.
Move forward with the pilot program or the program that the pilot is trying to evaluate.
Right, okay. That's all I have.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Is everyone looking at me now? I do have one thing and it's to Jason. With the bus stops, I know you're doing all that program. Now that they've come off Old Kings Road, they're in the back roads, which is great, but as the people come around the corner, they're not expecting to see kids in a group over there. Is there maybe some way we can do a bus stop ahead or something even in the back roads just so people know when they come around the corner, there's three or four little kids running in the street?
There's a signage program that's going to come out. And the signage program isn't just part of the pilot, I don't believe the signage program is part of a larger, a larger program.
We talked about the, kind of the warning signs, but also the, parents are supposed to park at least 50 feet away from stop signs where in these, and so put those type of regulatory signs up so that if they aren't, sheriff's deputies can go out and do a little chatting with people as to why, the safety issue and all those. So that's, it's more than.
They're doing that in my area. It's, they're all parking where they're supposed to park, but the kids get out and they do run, they're thinking it's a side street, we're safe. And you come around the corner and they're just there.
And there, there needs to be the warning signs and things you're proposing. So it's, I'm trying to say it's a combination of things. It's not just one versus the other and every site's a little different. So we are trying to work on a comprehensive.
What was that, the location?
That is for New and for Nora.
Well, since two members of the audience got a second bite out of the apple, I'm going to take an opportunity to take the second bite out of the apple. Because there is, there is one misconception that's been reported in the media that I want to clarify. It has been said that the city of Palm Coast wants to take over and run its own ambulance service. There is no elected official that I'm aware of or city employee who has ever said that.
Correct.
It is not our desire. And I'll tell you why it's not my desire. Recent statistics, 80% of the residents in Flagler County live in Palm Coast, roughly. During the school day, seven of the eight county schools are in Palm Coast, so during the school day, the number of Flagler County residents in Palm Coast goes up. The vast majority of retail and commercial shopping opportunities are, is in Palm Coast. We probably do draw some non-Palm Coast residents. So at any given moment, 80% of the Flagler County population is in Palm Coast, give or take. It's reasonable to assume that 80% of your EMS calls are in Palm Coast unless, unless the county has data to show me otherwise. I'm just, that seems logical, 80% of the people, 80% of the calls. The county has said, and they're correct, that EMS is not a moneymaker. They do bill for transportation and they sometimes get paid. Somebody told me that the billing is $7 million and the receipts are $3 million. Well, if that's the case, 80% of $3 million is $2.4 million that is being generated within Palm Coast. If we were to take over the ambulance service, when I'm not asking to do that and I'm not suggesting to do that, that would be $2.4 million out of county revenues that they use to provide the more diverse ambulance service to the Barrier Island, to the West County and so on and so forth. I understand that and that's why I'm not asking that we take it over. I don't want to take it over, but I do want to make it more effective and more efficient. So, one other thing. This is the Palm Coast Water Challenge. This is sponsored by the Wyland Foundation. It's a nationwide program, asking people to go online, mywaterpledge.com. It's a checkbox, I pledge to do this, I pledge to do this. It'd take you about a minute if you're slow on the keyboard, maybe faster if you're pretty good at typing. Take the pledge. Last year, out of all the communities of our size, Palm Coast placed seventh nationwide. Now, it's, I'm encouraging every resident, every city employee, everybody to go online and make this water pledge. and make this water pledge. It has to be in the month of April. We're in April now, it ends April 30th. Please do this. Now, it'd be good for the city. A city that prides itself on being green, it would be nice to have national recognition as having a population that is concerned about water conservation. And you'd better be, because you all know the joke about, "There's no shortage of water in Florida, just cheap water." But there are hundreds of prizes that are randomly distributed to the people who take the pledge, including a Prius. So, if you need a new car, go online, take the Water Challenge. Your probably odds are better than what you'd do if you get the lottery tickets. So, please, mywaterpledge.com, go online, take the pledge, and thank you very much. Discussion by city attorney of matters, not on the agenda.
I think it's important to recognize that the decision, a decision came out of the United States Supreme Court this week, which I think is a very important decision. Unanimously, they approved the traditional concept of one person, one vote, for purposes of creating districts. That was subject to being challenged by different jurisdictions. So, this is something that has historically always been the, the case in the United States of America, and it was subject to challenge, and it, and that challenge failed. And I think it's important for us to recognize, arguably, how important that concept is, that the, the purpose of, of that law is to make sure that if you live in an area, then, then your representation will be based upon the population of that area. And what was, what they were challenging is saying, rather than a population of an area for purposes of calculation of districts, it would be by registered voters, which, of course, would have changed things dramatically here in Palm Coast, here in Flagler County, here in the state of Florida, and throughout the United States of America. So, that was a recent decision, unanimous decision, out of Washington. So, I guess that alone is, is something to applaud, but also for the, the substance of the decision, I think is important to recognize. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Discussion by city manager of matters, not on the agenda.
I, I think it was a great discussion tonight. I don't have anything further to add. Thank you very much.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Get with it.
He moves to this.
Move to a turn.
Your turn. Thank you all.